Good evening. I would like to call to order the November 4, 2024, meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I will, excuse me, at this time, I will recognize Commissioner Larry Yoder for our invocation, followed by, and then I will lead us in the place of allegiance. Please stand and direct.
If y'all would, I'm going to ask each and every one of you would to have a moment of silent prayer for our election process this year. As you all know, there's been a lot of division in our country. Things have been said that maybe shouldn't have been said. But the important thing is that people get out and vote, support the candidates of their choice, and do it in a peaceful way. This is the United States of America, and we're grown adults. We're people that know how to act and how to treat one another. So long this night and for tomorrow, please pray for those that are involved in the election, pray for our country to go through this election in a peaceful, professional, and an adult manner, I'd ask at this time. Our kind of most gracious, as we come before you this evening, we come to you asking your blessings upon this country, upon the people, upon our leaders. Be it those leaders across the world, help them that they may see a way to bring peace and harmony throughout this world. Be it our first responders that respond in the need of those who are having problems or in emergency situations. Be it those people from Western North Carolina, Eastern Tennessee, and Northern Georgia. Be it those people who have been through so much, and now that the emergency's over, remember that these folks are still going through trying times and hard times, and it's going to be a long time before they're able to have their lives back in a way that they were. Be it those who have lost loved ones, be it those emergency responders who have lost their lives and trying to recover and to respond. And we'd ask you again, Lord, to be with the leaders of this country. Be with us. Be with each and every person that lives and carries on the things that should has to be done. For we ask these things to be done in thy name, in God's name we pray. Amen.
Please place the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is Commissioners' Reports. Gentlemen, does anyone have a report or information they'd like to share?
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to gather the Western Peak Lock Council of Governments down to New Orleans for a conference, and it was on economic development and growth in communities, and very educational, learned a lot, got to meet a lot of new people. And one of the things that didn't really have a lot to do with economic development, but it had to do with the people in Asheville, I had the opportunity to meet and spend some time with the mayor of Protema of Asheville. Some of the things that she told me, I found out that what she was telling me true is some of the things that I had heard weren't true, because I had heard that so many of the homeless people there in the Art District there in Asheville had been washed away and had been killed. That was not the case. As most of you know, the Western Peak Lock Council of Governments has been going around in the Alexander, Caldwell, Catawba, and Burke Counties, and they are getting the names of the folks that are harmless, I mean homeless. And that process worked, that they had the names of those folks, because when they evacuated the homeless folks in Asheville, they had their names, and they knew that those folks were safe. And all I had heard was about how many people had been washed away because the Art District was flooded really, really bad. But to hear her give the story and to understand what is going on and how many lives are really saved and that they weren't killed in the floods, it was very emotional to hear her talk about it and talk about it from the heart. So of all that, there was good things came out of it, and I got a chance to listen to somebody that was totally involved in the flooding that gave their opinion of what had happened up there and what went on. We needed to continue to make sure that we pray for those people in those areas that's been devastated, because there's still a lot of devastation that's got to be taken care of. But it's a good meeting in New Orleans, learned a lot, got to spend some time with folks that's on the cog board, and it made a difference in the things that we're seeing and hearing about.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Leo, I'd like to make notice that Alexander County Government will once again participate in Operation Green Light to let veterans know they are seen, appreciated, and supported, starting today through Veterans Day on November the 11th. Green Lights will be displayed at the Administration Building, Services Center, and Courthouse Park, and our citizens and folks in the county can participate by changing out a light bulb to a green one, simple as that. And veterans will, they recognize this, and they just probably put a smile on their face. Thank you.
And I would just say to that, I actually, you might think it's hard to find green light bulbs, but it's not. Amazon, you got, Amazon has your choice, because I actually ordered a few yesterday afternoon. So don't let finding green light bulbs be a reason not to support our veterans. Anyone else? If not, we will move on. Gentlemen, the next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. We do have one item on the consent agenda that needs a title correction. There's no change to this item other than the title itself. It is Item I, Industrial Park Shell Building Sewer System Extension Project Bid Award. That needs to be officially changed to Industrial Park Shell Building Sewer Extension Project Bid Award Pending Release of Grant Funds. So if you would make that minor change, otherwise, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the correction executed.
Sir. We have a motion to the second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll bear please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, number six, public comment. We do have one person that has signed up to public comment. As normal procedure, I will read the brief outline describing the procedure. Alexander County Board of Commissioners, Board of County Commissioners, Public Comment November 4, 2024. Public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It is not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impropriate questions. A time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting of each month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please select one spokesperson to represent a group of citizens with the same concerns or questions. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to any individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agenda. Any citizen wishing to address the Board during public comment shall call a clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. Mr. Don Tatum, you're welcome to approach the podium, sir.
Okay. Thank you so much. Just wanted to thank everybody for allowing me to speak today. I just wanted to provide the Commissioners and the rest of Alexander County an update on our incorporation process for Bethlehem. So far, we've received a great response from the community, overall very positive. Our goal currently is to get signatures to Patrick at the BOE, probably in a week or so, to give him a little bit of time to work through the current election process that he's going through for his verification. Our team is currently moving into Phase Two, which is continued community education awareness while continuing to get additional signatures. But based on our current response and the overall positive response we've received, our new goal is actually to obtain a plurality of signatures from the community. Our new website, which is BethlehemZoning.com, is up and running, and that's to help the community learn about the incorporation process, where we are, answer questions, pros and cons, so they can hear from both sides, and hopefully the rest of the people in the community will learn what we need and where we're going. That was all I had for today. I just want to keep you guys updated on our progress, and we'll keep you next month.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to next item on our agenda, we have a public hearing pertaining to rezoning case 24-6, Taylor's Lions Club. I'll recognize Amy Bucknam, our county manager. Gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open?
Sub move.
Second. We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll bear please raise your right hand. We are now in, we are now in a public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Ling, Commissioners. The Taylorsville Lions Club has submitted an application to rezone their property. As you know, the county was rezoned in May because they are considered a nonprofit organization. They were rezoned to office institutional. They are requesting to change that to community commercial. The background for that is they're nonprofit primarily. They rent out the space for different uses, and community commercial fits better with the things that they have done in the past and they plan to do in the future. This rezoning went before the Planning Board at the October 10 meeting and was found to be, and they felt it was consistent with the comprehensive plan, the, I think, page five of the future land use plan. This is located in the rural transition area, and community commercial is considered appropriate for that area. If you look at the zoning around that area, it's kind of a mix of residential, other community, commercial, and other mixed-use zoning. So we feel like it's complimentary with land use in that area as well. It is in the watershed four, protected watershed area, so anything, any development that they would do there would have to meet those standards, and obviously any building or anything that they did. They're not proposing any changes or anything right now, but anything that they brought forth would have to meet all of the community's standards. The Planning Board recommends approval. Do you have any questions?
We, and I want to say this, we are having some technical issues this evening. Our screens, our screen and props are blank. We do have iPads, but not as easy to see. This is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience has any question or statements they would like to make, that So it is pretty quiet. Pleadings. Well, if, if there are no questions, and we're, if there are no questions, gentlemen, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. If there is any discussion, if not, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. I will now ask for a motion pertaining to the rezoning case.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning case of 24-06, Taylorsville Lions Club.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor of approval, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item, we have a request to sponsor, and I'm not sure I say this properly, S-T-R-A-P, capital S, lowercase t, capital A, capital P, funds for stream debris removal. I recognize Pamela Bowman, Soil and Water Director.
Thank you. Yes, it's the Stream Restoration Assistance Program, or the STRAP program. So we have a lot of acronyms with soil and water, so this is just, just one of them. So I did not prepare a PowerPoint this time, because all of you on this Board have seen our pictures before, some before and afters that we've done. This is the same process that we've handled over the past four years, three, three, four years, with stream debris removal funds. These are funds from the state. So we just recently received $85,714, so that will be to, to remove debris from as many sites as we can. Honestly, it's probably only going to handle one or two that are on our list, and we just go straight down the priority order. So this is asking you to, to continue the program that we've been handling. We have completed all the ones that we already were funded for. Actually, just did a quick add up. We've, we've done 12 projects altogether. It was three different set of fundings, and it was just over 16,000 linear feet that we have cleaned out already. So there's still a lot more. We actually requested 1.1 million for 28 sites, and we only got 85,000. So however, that's what we got. We got something. So is there, does anybody have any questions or how do you feel about that?
I guess, was there more that was passed on? We just had, we should have been more sure.
So there, there were some, but not near as bad as we would have expected. So we did get out and look around, especially some of these sites that we knew had debris still, and we also expected to get a lot of calls. We really didn't get that many calls. And we didn't, we didn't have any money yet then, this was before we had this announcement too. So we didn't publicize, you know, let us know if you've got large problems or anything like that. But I did contact emergency management and Fire Marshal's Office and, and let them know that if they had any of these type of calls, to let us know. So I'm glad you asked that too. So last time with tropical storm Ada and Zeta, we had, you know, horrendous stuff here. So the Western North Carolina, further west was a lot worse this time, a lot worse than we had it even then. But since we didn't have it as bad here, there was nothing that we saw that was imminent danger, potential loss of life in the next storm, and that's what you would have to have to get federal emergency money at this point. So we don't see any sites right now that would be potential to take out a bridge in the next storm or anything like that. So this is not specifically from Hurricane Helene. This is money that we had already asked for from the state. However, the state has discussed, our state agency, Division of Soil and Water, has discussed that they are requesting emergency funds for, through the state. So we don't feel like we're eligible for any of the federal imminent danger emergency funds, but any of the state funds that did not require it to be imminent danger, we will definitely apply for that too, but we don't have that opportunity yet. So I'll probably be back. I'll probably, hopefully, you know, before, before long, we'll be back with more requests.
I was told last week that since Alexander County was included in the disaster area, that there is another tranche of money that is being applied for, because I know some people in Caldwell that's applied, and so that Alexander was included.
For DWP, or just, just, yes, additional funding?
Yeah, it's, I can't remember the acronym. WP something or other.
Okay.
Mike was telling me about it this past week.
Yes. We, we are surveying all of the digital sites and all the potential funding and going after what we're eligible for. So what, even if, even if the money is potentially there, if we don't have sites that are eligible, we can't get it. So that's, I think that's where that is. They have some sites, I think, that are eligible if we don't. However, we're, we're going to keep on asking for this STRAP money as well, and like I said, any state emergency money. We don't have a budget amendment or anything like that this time yet, because we don't know how much the contractor costs. The, I will say, we have done, we have used other outside agencies for admin in the past. We're not going to do that this time, because we've handled, we've gone through three different pots of money, and we feel like we can handle it ourselves. And this is like a smaller amount too, so we should be okay to do that.
So just for clarification, so basically, the action that we, that we need to take is to sponsor, which is, is to sponsor Soil and Water, which basically means that we would use, $85,714 will come.
Reimbursement.
Come from, right.
Yes.
Come from an outside source, but it is reimbursement.
Yes.
Which means that Alexander County, that we will essentially front that 87, up to To do the work, once the work is completed, then we will, then Alexander County will be reimbursed 100% of that money.
Yes.
Like the up to the $85,714.
That, that's correct.
And I just, like I say, just wanted to clarify that for everyone here as well as anyone interested, so.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
I went a lot simpler this time, because I know y'all have heard about it and seen it, but yes, I appreciate you mentioning that for everyone else.
Well, and we, and we love, I say we, it's always good to have money from other places that we can use to benefit Alexander County.
Yes.
So members of the Board, what is, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thanks very much. Next item, Ms. Bowman, if you would remain there.
All right.
Next item on the agenda is Soil and Water Conservation District Mutual Aid Agreement.
All right, thank you. So this is a, an agreement that was put out by a few different agencies that are mutually agreeing on, on this. It's the Division of Soil and Water, so that's our state agency, and then also the Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts. That's our association of our boards of supervisors. We have five supervisors that oversee our contracts and things like that for each county of the, in the state of North Carolina. So it was seen that there was a need for district personnel, and I'm talking about soil and water districts, to help other counties in the past. So this has been the storms that were four years ago. So we had some storms here, but also Western North Carolina had some storms, and also Eastern North Carolina has, of course, had lots of storms, where especially people that are specialized with drone licenses, pilot license, and things like that, which we do have, we do have a staff member that has his pilot's license now. Tyler Cornet does, and we have, we have a drone in our office. This agreement came about because it was seen that other people with specialties could help other districts, and this was an agreement to make it kind of all legal and show who would be responsible for what, things like that. We have helped each other in the past without having this agreement. We haven't gone, you know, far away or overnight or anything like that. But in the past, we didn't bring this to you before, because we've had a few changes in staff over the last four years with our soil and water conservationists. And honestly, I had small children, and so I wasn't wanting to agree to go stay overnight, be out of town too much. So at this time though, we have pretty, pretty solid staff, and like I said, Tyler Cornet has his drone license and has mentioned that he would be interested in helping if needed other, other districts, other counties. Also, I've been, I've been trained through the storms we had here in doing the data forms and things for the emergency funding for stream debris removal, and we have a lot closer sites as well, so it wouldn't necessarily be overnight trips. So we are interested in helping other counties, and this agreement, like I said, is not necessarily something we have to have for that. However, it's just saying that we're willing to be on the list. So basically, the state will keep up with who has what, even job approval authority. So that has to do with our cost share programs that we do, let's say livestock exclusion fencing, or building dry stacks for chicken litter, storage, things like that. So if we have a new staff member in the county next to us and they need help signing off something, they can look at their list and say, okay, Alexander has somebody that can do that. But also, we can use that resource too, because we're not going to have, you know, the expertise and everything, definitely. We're gonna, we're gonna need help. And if, in the event that we have natural disasters where we need additional people to come in, you know, if we've signed this, it's showing we've put our foot forward and said we're willing to help, so we're going to be more likely to get other people to help too. Although we, soil and water across the state really is like a family, so we all try to help each other in place. However, this is an official agreement saying that we're available to help. However, Alexander County is going to come first. We're going to get our work done in Alexander County. We're not going to go leave for a month and not do our job here or anything like that. And if we are to go help for a day or two, let's say in Caldwell, we're still going to be under our workers' comp and everything. Caldwell County is not going to be responsible for us, if Alexander County still is. And I sent the actual agreement, so it's a few pages. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. Like I said, it doesn't obligate us to do anything. I'm just basically saying, like I said, that we're, we're willing if we're able.
Well, this is never a matter of any recovery basis.
Right.
This agreement, this agreement should do that. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve? Is there any?
Make a motion, excuse me. I make a motion to approve the agreement as presented.
No motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Bethlehem Water Tank Project Bid Overnerved and Recommendation. I will recognize being called married. Any turn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have an update on the Bethlehem Water Tank Project. On Thursday, October 10th, bids were received for this project. The lowest bid submitted was from Lock Lane Construction out of Stony Point. The bid was complete and in accordance with bid requirements. It was also responsive and was from a responsible bidder capable of performing a was from a responsible bidder capable of performing and completing the project. Bid for the construction of, of a 750,000 gallon elevated water tank, along with 1,100 linear feet of water line and all necessary appurtenances from Lock Lane, was for a total The only other bid received on the 10th was from Caldwell Tanks Incorporated out of Louisville, Kentucky, which was for $5,814.0. This was the second round of bidding. About two weeks prior to the 10th, there was the first round, we only received two bids, which were, you have to have three in the first round, we had to re-advertise. The engineer, less consultants, and Alexander County staff recommend awarding the construction contract to Lock Lane in the amount of $4,758,200. This award is subject to final approval by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Division of Water Infrastructure. I'll attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
Been waiting a long time for that meeting. Glad to see that we're finally in the process of getting that water tower over into Bethlehem community, and to help our water system also, because of equalization and pressure. It's gonna be very good for Alexander County, especially those folks who are on the city with picky water. So it's a good move. With that said, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the bid, except the bid as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, number 11, Old Ellendale School Property Right, Write a First Refusal Resolution. Recognize, your turn, Ben Falconberry.
Pursuant to General Statute 115(c)(518), when a local school board has deemed real property no longer needed for school purposes, it should be sold. A surplus property that board must first offer the real property to the Board of County Commissioners for sale at a fair market value or other amount as agreed upon. On October 14th, the school board, the Alexander County School Board resolved that 6.8 acres, which includes the old Ellendale School, and the accompanying older structure is no longer needed for school purposes, and that their intent was to sell it as surplus. A copied plat recorded back in May, which had subdivided the old school from the new school, is included in your packet. The offer, as I have understood, understood it from the school board's attorney, is that they're offering to sell the property at $905,000. The school currently has an offer from Crosspoint Church, which is currently a lessee, to purchase for $625,000. They have requested the school board to basically credit them to it for $280,000 in improvements they've made during the four years that they've been there. So if you add those two numbers up, it's $905,000. Their, their other numbers of tax value for that particular parcel is $1.35 million. And they also have a broker's price opinion, which is 1.4. But the offer, as I understand it, is $905,000.
Just, just one, one question, and I think this is more clarification. Obviously, more education sells the property to whomever they, you know, they have unrestricted, you know, unrestricted use of those funds. I mean.
It's my understanding.
Is that, I mean, where the funds could be applied, where they're needed?
It's my understanding that once the sale, if, if this offer is denied from the board tonight, the process would be an upset bid process after advertising. Once the sale actually occurs, that money would go to the school board's capital outlay For their purposes.
Okay.
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay, okay. Gentlemen, I would ask for a motion pertaining to the old Ellendale School Property, Write a First Refusal.
Make a motion for the school board to proceed with their offer.
Second.
So just make, just make, like I say, make it.
Just to clarify, the motion is to refuse the offer from the school, the school board and allow them to sell it.
Right, I would say, just for clarification purposes, the motion that was made is, is to, is basically saying that Alexander County does not want to buy, purchase the property, that we, that Alexander County, um, will allow the school system to give shape and sell the property. Is that a candidate? Just making sense.
We'd like to ask some questions from the dinner gal.
Um.
Okay.
It's not a public hearing.
I, I.
Um.
Ask.
So we have a motion, we have a second. We have a second. We have a second, we have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
All in favor of profit.
Okay. Motion ordnance amendments 15 through, 15 through 18.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. Excuse me. Budget Amendment 15 is broken down, is in the general fund, is broken down into four parts. The first one is a majority of funds previously allotted, allotted for security upgrades in a building was not, was not spent in the fiscal year that they was appropriated. The second one, second part is a 911, it's finished, that the county will be reimbursed by a North Carolina DPS, I'm pretty sure that's Department of Public Safety grant. Third part is a grant for a Soil and Water's purchase, another drone, this will be a 30% match. And then the fourth part of Budget Amendment Number 15 was additional federal funding, grant funding to enhance flu vaccine efforts among farm workers. 16, 17, and 18 Budget Amendment are all in the Water and Sewer Fund, and they're all to reimburse the county for preliminary engineering expenses for different water and sewer projects throughout the county. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve those orders, number 15 through 18.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve both amendments, number 15 through 18. No further discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is consent agenda. Gentlemen, you have had the opportunity, the opportunity to go over, wait through, however you want to describe it, you have had the information on consent agenda, and had the opportunity to look through that, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will recess per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 111a, 4, 5, and 6, and to close session for economic development, contractual, and personnel issues. We will reconvene after the closed session for the purpose of adjournment only. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, going to close session. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We are. Thank you everyone for being here.